Okay, welcome to Monday, November 6th, City Council and Planning Commission. We're talking about the 50-year plan work session, Development Code amendments. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Today, we are joined by Heather Austin from 3J Consulting, and Monica Ayers, Carla Vernwald, and Bill Blank from the Planning Commission. Thank you. City Planner Lori Joseph Oliver, if you'd like to take it away.
Perfect, thank you. That's okay. Thanks for being here, Mayor and Council and Planning Commission members. Tonight, we have Heather Austin from 3J Consulting, and we will be just going through, you each have your packets. So we're just gonna pull up that document on the screen and go through those revisions and talk through them here tonight. Good evening, everyone. It's really nice to be here with you. I have had the pleasure of meeting with your Stakeholder Advisory Committee several times now for your 50-year plan, and there's been a lot of work done on Development Code, concepts and ideas, and even draft language. And so tonight, we wanted to take an opportunity to get some feedback on where we're headed with some of these chapters. There are some chapters in their entirety in there, just so you can see the context of where the language is. But the Site Development Review chapter, we only put in a few sub-chapters, because we do anticipate changes to other subsections, but we weren't ready to share those yet, so we did keep that one short. So we were hoping we could just go through the packet this evening. Chronologically, the code sections are listed chronologically from your Development Code, and just talk through the issues one at a time. So we can start with page 4, which is your commercial zone, your general commercial zone. Pages 3 through 24 of this 43-page packet are your commercial and expanded commercial chapters, and they are the same proposed changes. So we're taking commercial and expanded commercial and looking at these updates similarly. And the updates include allowing outside dining facilities to be associated with restaurants and bars. Currently, you would require a conditional use permit for that to happen in your C and EC zones. And the feedback we were hearing was that we'd like to make that a little easier to do, that type of business in town. Then the second one there, that's a little bit longer, is that a food and beverage manufacturing or production facility can occur within limits associated with a retail component. So here, we're looking at microbreweries, wineries, distilleries, and things like bakeries and smaller production-scale-type businesses associated with those other uses. We had a lot of conversation at the Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting about how large that footprint should be limited to, because beyond a certain point, you really want to see those businesses occurring more in your industrial areas, if they're producing and manufacturing. And we did have someone at the SAC who had experience in the microbrewery industry, and we came to this 10,000-square-feet size, based on some conversation there. So I'll just pause there and see if there are any questions or comments about either of those proposed changes.
These were gone over with the Economic Development Committee? Is where some of these were talked about and discussed? Is that where we talked about them last?
This is with the Stakeholder Advisory Committee. Right, yes. And yep. Okay, well, that's, you're making it pretty easy on me so far. Page 6 has the next change, and that's just striking the outside dining facilities from the current conditional use list, since we moved it up to the permitted uses. If there are no further comments or questions about that, we can go all the way to page 25. And that begins our landscaping, screening, and fencing chapter. There are actually no changes until we get to 27. So landscaping, screening, and buffering is really looking at how we make sure that uses can be compatible next to other uses, and make sure we're putting in the appropriate types of spacing and buffers and screenings, if there's things like commercial uses near residential or higher-density residential uses, that sort of thing. So the first change you'll see at the top of page 27 is changing from buffering between different types of uses to different zoning. So this came from staff as a comment, because there are times when you might be in the commercial zoning district, but you have different types of uses, and you're requiring everybody to buffer from everything else, and it's really like commercial uses that are otherwise compatible. So it's a lot of space on the site that you're using up with the buffers that are probably not warranted there. So we're changing that to say "zone", so that you are still requiring it between, say, a commercial and a residential zone, or a commercial and industrial. Any questions about that? Okay. So on page 28 at the bottom, here's where we kind of really got into language. 28 and 29, as far as just making the requirements for parking area screening, we decided that we are going to take that entire section out and move it over to the parking and loading chapter. So we don't have that included for you this evening, but just that large amount of red strike-through, hopefully, isn't too worrisome. We will have screening and buffering requirements in the commercial, excuse me, parking and loading areas. But we're not removing it fully from the code. We're just changing the location, so that if you're looking at how to develop a commercial or industrial property, everything you need to know about how you design the parking area is all in one place. It would be a little more user-friendly that way.
Good question there. You know, we did have a gentleman that had some concerns there. Does, did we address, are we taking away parking spots in a parking lot? Are we being pretty open to let them maximize their parking spots?
That's a great question. We did have a really great conversation at the SAC meeting about that, and that was pertaining specifically to landscaping within the parking areas, because we don't currently have a requirement that you do that in between the spaces, like some cities do. And what the SAC came to was, it does take a lot of the property on a smaller, you know, maybe locally-owned business that has a smaller footprint site. But then, when you have places like Fred Meyer and By Mart and places like that with larger expanses of concrete, that there is space and the ability to add those standards in. So NJ on your staff did an awesome job assessing all of the larger parking lots in the city and providing feedback to us to look at that. And we'll be coming to our SAC meeting on November 28th with some recommendations about where the thresholds are for that.
Because after I brought it up, I did go to all the companies I go visit, and it is amazing how they use every inch of parking for containers or boxes or anything in parking, and that it can, if you're asking them to take away a few spots, they lose land that is very valuable.
Yes. Yeah, and that definitely came up at that SAC meeting, so we're definitely taking that into account. The next portion there, oh, yes?
Just a question. A B?
It is, it will be, yes. So the C will turn into a B, thank you for that. I'll take a second to give a lot of kudos to whoever decided to do a new code update online, because the new format, I know that's an investment for the city, but it is so much better to work with the formatting than the old portion. So this was a conversion over, and I apologize for not catching that, but moving forward, it's gonna look so much cleaner, because it's much easier. So, nice job. Okay, so on what will be new A, we were talking about screening for outside storage. And at the end of that, there's a little primer of what you'll see later in the Site Development Review, but we did strike the term, and the Planning Commission may require. For one thing, we want to have a discussion a little later when we get there about who's reviewing what types of developments, and if there's a staff-level review. So in a lot of places, you'll see us recommending striking Planning Commission and replacing with Review Authority. But in this case, maximum height, so shall have a minimum height of six feet, and then their city does allow up to seven feet, I believe. Well, under the building. Under the building code. So didn't feel like it was necessary to add that or keep that additional language in there.
Also not a clear and objective standard.
Thank you, yes. Should I go into that a little bit, or is that something you've worked on?
No, you might.
Okay.
Just set the context.
Sure. So Lori was just mentioning that it's not clear and objective as it applies to housing, and the state law does, has changed recently regarding this, but certain aspects of it have been in place for a while. But when you're applying criteria to the review of a housing project, whether it's single-family housing or multifamily, if it is needed housing per your housing needs analysis, you do have to apply only clear and objective standards to the review of that. So where we are seeing cities needing to update their development codes is with anything discretionary, such as, you know, the building should look like the other buildings on the site. There's a lot of discretion in that. You know, and in one way that you can really help with clear and objective standards is to have some level of staff-level review as well, and have it be really clear that you have to have a porch that is a certain amount of square feet, or porch or balcony, or you have to have a certain percentage of windows. So the way I think of clear and objective that tends to be helpful is, the more numerical, the better. So the more you can apply a number or a threshold or a percentage to something, the more you can really make sure that anyone can apply it to their proposal and know that they can meet the city's standards. So there'll be more on that as we move forward, especially when we get to Site Development Review. So down at the bottom of 29, fences or walls. There, we see the building code change from six to seven feet. So now you are permitted to have a seven-foot-tall fence? Okay. Page 30. The city currently has language regarding how you fence pools and ponds. And this, the state also has a uniform building code that regulates pools. It defines a swimming pool, and it determines how you must fence it in. And so for clarity and to make sure we're complying with state law, we removed the city's standards for the swimming pools and then included in what will now be subsection A, but was crossed out B, the second paragraph, defining what a swimming pool is, which is water intended for swimming or recreational bathing over 24 inches deep, and then requiring that swimming pool enclosures, so the gates or fences surrounding a swimming pool must meet the applicable building code and affect at the time of pool installation, to make sure that those standards are being met. And then what is new B subsection, we simplified the language regarding ponds in people's yards, so decorative ponds or fish ponds, and looked to allow either the fence, and here is where we added a numerical standard. It used to just read "a fence", and now we're saying a fence that's a minimum two feet in height, which was what the SAC decided on for the appropriate height for a fence that maybe would keep a toddler from moving through that space, or a wire screen or cover that could hold at least 75 pounds, not more than six inches below the water. That is by far the more common way that people handle pond protection is with that wire screen. But if someone decided to use the fence, the standard is there as well. Questions about pools and ponds?
Yes.
Okay.
Who decided the 18 inches on the depth of a pond?
I believe that was existing.
All ponds or other decorative pools having a depth of 18 inches or more.
Yes, anything that's in black is your current code.
I couldn't say who. I mean, that, the code's been on the books for the last nine years since I've been here, but I'm not sure where that.
That's still a significant amount of water.
What did it say before then? Because all ponds is red, so was it "hawns"?
It just said decorative pools.
That was part of the previous sentence. Every person in possession has started there.
There's a fish pond or other decorative.
Recommend that it's less?
I just, any body of water is nerve-wracking to me, little kids. And I know people who have had bodies of water, like a pond, that didn't have them fenced, and we've had that scenario here locally. And I think 18 inches is still like a substantial amount of water. I think a foot is still a substantial amount of water. You know, a toddler falls in face-first, but.
Yeah.
I mean, puddles are, you know, like, where do we?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if there's a standard that we could look at.
And this one doesn't show up in the building codes. This was something that the city added beyond what the state building codes require back in the day. So we saw the need for it and included it, but.
I mean, I don't see why you couldn't reduce it to 12 inches, and then you'd get that six-inch screen at that point. So you could go up to 12 inches. Anything 12 inches, 12.1 inches would be.
I mean, most people probably aren't gonna have anything six inches or lower. You know what I mean? Like, you're not gonna have a decorative pond that's only.
Like a bird, bird bath.
Yeah. Is that, is that reasonable to change it to 12 inches, where it then requires the screen? Oh, yes, this language will all come to you.
Yeah, so, yeah, so Bill, so this would, this would still go to Planning Commission at the adoption phase for review of everything, before it went to council for their final approval.
Yes.
But Lori, if people have to, so a home is already established. I think I really want a pond. Do you need a permit for that?
Offer a little decorative.
Exactly. So we don't really know what people have or not, until unfortunately, there's an incident, and it wasn't, you know, fenced off, or.
Exactly right, unless they had the wherewithal to ask.
Which most people.
Well, they wouldn't necessarily think to even ask.
Yeah.
One thought on that is, you know, whether you change it or not, you could always, you know, in the spring, when people are starting to do their landscaping, you could do an announcement on your website or add it in your newsletter, or things like that. And you could, if you're, I agree. It's really hard for people to know and for the city to enforce if nobody knows this is in your backyard or your side yard.
So if it's 17 inches, you don't need either.
Currently, correct.
Yeah, we're saying if you, you need the mesh at six inches, so anything beyond six inches is dangerous. Or you, they wouldn't be.
Oh, it's just saying here that you have the option of doing a two-foot-tall fence or mesh six inches below the surface, so that you can't see it, so it's not visible.
Below is safer.
Is what it's implying.
I think it is implying that, yeah, that your mesh is.
Which is, you don't need anything.
Yeah.
There's the one-year-olds, you know?
I mean, changing it to six, again, not really, knowing that you may not be enforcing all of these, but at least letting people know.
I mean, I don't mind 12 inches either. It just, it's, I mean, they could put a fence around it if they want, but it's just crazy that would let them go up to 18 with nothing yet. We think six inches is kind of the safe mark.
Seems to me we would release something to the sellers that sell fences, whether it be Fred Meyer's or the landscaping places, city standards, because what's happening, most likely, I was to go out and buy a decorative pool, fish. It's gonna be a standard that they already have. It's a form, dropping it around. But there might be another one that fits our criteria that someone would have to comply, because it would comply with what the city is asking. It seems to me we'd almost make it part of the thing. These retailers know what they're, so, standards.
Yeah, I mean, we typically don't notify, because we wouldn't have a way of knowing where they're shopping. I mean, we could send, just as good faith, you know, send it to some local distributors. Yeah, and whether they share that once we send it to them, we wouldn't necessarily know. We could do both. We could do something along those lines, plus do, you know, a newsletter update, like Heather suggested. I mean, I think it's reasonable to go to 12 inches if we think. I don't think six inches. I mean, you get a puddle in your yard, you could be at six inches. I think 12 inches would be better.
I feel comfortable with 12 if people are willing to make that change.
Be interesting to see what the standard pond is, you know, that they sell the most of. If it's a 13-inch-deep one, well, then, okay, you know. Right. Say 12, none of them qualify. But if it's, they're all over the place. They're all different. Average, it says, for a koi pond is three feet.
Yeah.
Pretty deep.
Yeah.
Like a little fountain.
And insurance, too. I don't know what insurance requires on that, because I'm sure when you buy your insurance, that there's requirements on pools and ponds and.
Yeah. I'll mark it down to 12 right now, and then this, like we said, will come to Planning Commission and City Council again, and get outreach in the spring and things, too. Okay, that is it for that code section. The next section starts on page 33. It's your street trees. So these are just the streets, the trees along the city street, not on private property. On page 35, there's just a change from insure with an I to insure with an E. I think we have another one of those on 36, as well as clarifying street light instead of street lamp, just trying to be consistent with our language. We knew that there were some pretty minimal changes there, so, but just wanted to let you know, we've been working on this chapter. Page 37, there is a change to penalties for damage or removal of street trees. And the language is fairly similar to what was there before, but we just wanted to make sure that anyone who damages or removes a street tree is on the hook for replacing it, and that if you do that, you're going to be subject to the penalties defined by chapter 17.24, which is your enforcement chapter for your zoning code. So just giving that a little more teeth from the point of view of being able to make somebody replace the street tree if they remove it or deface it, top it, mutilate it. And that's some standard language that we see in other development codes.
Yes.
Lori, am I remembering that we have like a go-to list of street tree recommendations or requirements?
Yeah, we have an approved street tree list they have to choose from, yeah.
And does that include the shrubbery and such for buffers? Or they can do whatever for that?
No, the code will define like the size of the shrub, like five-gallon shrub or something like that, that needs to be provided. And occasionally, it will describe sort of, you know, that they want sort of your ground cover, low-lying shrubbery, and then trees as well. But it doesn't, we don't have like an approved list of shrubbery.
Street trees are important because of visibility.
Correct, we do, yeah. And we don't, we don't want, you know, something that's maybe gonna start branching out at two feet off the ground. You know, we want that clearance. Yeah, that's why we have approved street trees. And some trees, sort of right here, were alternate trees, not on our approved street tree list. And at the time, the developer proposed something different, and I don't know if it went to council for that approval, because it was different, but it was approved by, by the Planning Commission, I believe, and possibly the council not knowing, you know, how, what the impacts would be.
What they look like now.
Yeah. But this is, this is why it's important to have good approved street trees.
Some of these older neighborhoods, when, like, next to my mom, there's a big tree that's right on the edge of the street. Is that considered a street tree?
If it's in the right-of-way. So if we look at our maps in GIS, and we can see that the property line slash right-of-way, you know, is encompassing that tree, we treat it as a street tree. If it is on private property, but in a street tree easement, we govern it as a street tree as well. So in some of the older neighborhoods, we actually have to pull up the plat, the subdivision plat, to see if that street tree easement exists or not.
It's a big tree, and branches are starting to break and fall on the street, and all potentially cars or people. So if they have questions, they can reach the city and.
There's a street tree removal permit. There's four different criteria they can choose from as reasons for removal. NJ and I review those and issue approval when they have met one of those four criteria.
Yes.
I think that the mayor brings up a really good point, is that a lot of our code is complaint-driven.
Yes.
And so if, you know, anybody, whether it's you or any, any citizen notices or is questioning something, encouraging them to pick up the phone or email and just say, on the corner of whatever, I'm doing this. I don't know if this is okay, or if there's something else. I've, I've done that as a citizen, still sitting on council. You know, I emailed a list of a couple of things the other day, like, is there language that, or we can work this out or not?
That's right, yeah.
I think, other than, I mean, it's not like we have the capacity for either, you know, public works or police to just be driving around and, right, you know? Like, we just don't.
Well, right, and then there's, yeah, that's right. And then there's also the, the thing of if, if we are going out and spot-checking here and there, that is that fair if we've only done that on one street, you know? And so it is very helpful when, when those things are brought to our attention. We're still looking into, into the issues you raised.
Oh, no, it's fine, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, just a heads up.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Send me an email.
Just before we move on, the question about what requirements there are for the buffer zones as far as plant types and sizes. Pages 27 and 28 of your packet, do you have that information? Lori was referencing as far as like the five-gallon shrubs and the different sizes of ground, like different ground covers and things. So if you are curious and want to look more at 27 and 28 at some point, and then if you do have, you know, recommendations or thoughts on it, you can always feed it back to staff, and we can add in, too. Okay, well, that brings us to our Site Development Review chapter, which we thought would probably take the majority of our time, so I'm glad we have about a half hour to talk about it. The very first portion, which is 17.120.020, starting on page 39 and 40, just talks about where Site Development Review is applicable. And there are currently exceptions for things like single-family detached dwellings. Manufactured dwellings will change the language from homes to dwellings to match state legislation. Duplex and triplex. And we added quadplex and townhouse development, again, to make sure that we're applying clear and objective standards and not requiring the SDR review to those where they're permitted. We removed, we removed any proposed development with a conditional use. We were, we're still coming back and forth on that one, I think, on conditional use permit or not. And then family, childcare home is a new term that came out of the state legislature this year. And residential care home, both are required to be permitted outright in your, our zones without requiring the Site Development Review to apply there. Any questions about what's exempt from Site Development Review?
Can you elaborate on why F is stricken and being discussed?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. The current conditional use language does not have review policies in it similar to the Site Development Review. And it's very common in the cities, other cities that I've worked in, that you can be subject to Site Development Review and conditional use permit, or if you're only subject, subjected to conditional use review, you have standards in the conditional use review that are similar to Site Development Review. Currently, SCAPUs requires one or the other, and conditional use doesn't have site design type criteria in it. So we're going to be moving forward, probably next time that we meet with you as a, as a joint work session, with a recommendation for how to pull together Site Development Review and conditional use permit, or how to differentiate between the two, but make sure standards are applying to both. So any other questions about what's exempt from Site Development Review? Hey, I am going to hand it over to Lori for this next section that begins on page 40, because this is kind of a larger topic. We, we have not taken this to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting, because it's more of a policy decision for City Council with feedback from the Planning Commission to decide if there are certain types of Site Development If there are certain types of um, site development review applications that could be handled um, by staff with really clear. Um, standards to apply, so we did use the Oregon model code to um, give some thresholds of what those might be. And Lori has some more information.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, as we're going through these um, provide, and maybe I'll, maybe I'll have you walk through. The, this section here on page um, forty and top of forty-one, and then um, once she does that, I'll just provide sort of some. Uh, recent projects and maybe like how it would apply under the new code. Um, that might kind of set the tone and, and be helpful for you.
Yeah, so um, what C is saying is that anything that exceeds um, what's listed here goes to the planning commission. So um, the model code does, excuse me, the Oregon state model code, they um, provide um, a model code for cities to use. As a reference point when they're doing code updates that is compliant with state law and that is kind of considered um, in industry best practices. So for a site development review project, if you have a smaller size or scope project coming in. It is um, a little bit less expensive and takes a little bit less time to have a staff level review and can be more um, business friendly, development friendly. But also applying your city's standards, and those standards are usually really straightforward, so staff can do that um, without a lot of discretion generally. Um, so those types of things are, um, you, you have a um, new um, site or a site that's changing. That exceeds a hundred daily average trips, so that's um, vehicles in and out. Um, and there's the Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual that lists trips for every kind of use there is, and it's updated annually. So the, any new business that no one ever thought of before is usually captured by the next year and that, so you can rely fairly um, well. On those daily trips and what impact that might have. The next is five thousand square feet of gross floor area, so again, we talked about a ten thousand foot um, bakery, retail. In the C or EC zones, anything over between five and ten would come to planning commission, but if somebody is doing a very small. You know, jewelry shop or insurance agent store or something that's um, five thousand square feet or less, that could be reviewed by planning commission. Or by city staff um, under this. A site is um, so larger than one acre would automatically go to the planning commission, because that's a pretty good sized piece of property. That you're looking to develop, so that's a easy threshold. Um, this is where we did add back in, uh, the proposal includes a non-conforming use, so um, if we're going to have this SDR and non-conforming use. Be required, and if you have, or excuse me, sorry, this is non-conforming use. So if you have a existing structure that maybe you're changing the use, or um, you're just building onto, but it's not meeting setbacks. Or it's not meeting um, some other piece of the code, that does go a little beyond a non-discretionary process. So it does make sense for planning commission to review that. Um, the next is a variance, uh, and we went a little bit back and forth because there are different levels of variances, but um, Lori, I think you finally said. I mean, if it has a variance, planning commission should probably see it, it's, they're looking to step outside of the standard um, criteria to be met. Um, the next one is where I was jumping ahead, the conditional use permit, so if you are requiring conditional use permit and site development review. Um, a conditional use is already going to the planning commission, so you take the site development review application with it and review them both at the same time. So you're not in a situation where planning commission's deciding this, but it's addition to have staff approve the site development review, it all just goes together. If you have both required. Um, and then number seven, which is on the top of forty-one, is just if the planning director determines that there'd be some sort of um, impact. To the um, community, then they're able to say, this should go straight to planning commission. Um, that's, we specifically stated that that would be for non-residential proposals, just because we are limited with residential uses. Of what we can put discretion towards, so why that language is in there. So any questions or thoughts about the thresholds that would separate, or do you wanna talk about examples first?
Yeah, so just for instance, um, peak performance, so it used to be the old Sears building, recently changed into a gym. That uh, under this proposal would, and actually, we haven't quite gotten there yet. Because it has to do with um, what's coming up in, in a few more pages, which is a major, major modification. To existing development, currently, uh, it's a pretty stringent list, so nearly anything. If it's a change in land use at all, even if it's outright permitted, it's going to planning commission. Uh, so peak performance, uh, it was a major modification because it hit, I think, three of the triggers. Was a change in land use, it required additional onsite parking, um, and it was a change of use through the building codes. And so, under the provisions of the new code, it would not go to planning commission for approval. Would still be subject to site development review, but it would be at staff level. Uh, similarly, there's a RE/MAX office that is, um, this is a current land use application where we're looking at. Does have to go to planning commission because it's a change in land use and it requires additional parking onsite. It would be a conversion of a residential home to a real estate office, so a commercial use. Um, again, under, under the new provisions, it would not need to go to planning commission because it's an outright permitted use. It's not over the five thousand square feet, um, and um, it requires very little parking to serve that use. So, um, and then the other one was like when the glowing putters went in, which was um, just north of the Sears building. It's part of peak performance now, that also would not have required going to planning commission. When you're talking about a change of use, which happens fairly regularly, um, that's, and a lot of times. It's a smaller type business owner that is um, applying for land use to do those sorts of small change of uses. Um, going to the planning commission is just that extra step that takes, you know, it could add on an additional four weeks. While they're waiting for that planning commission hearing date um, to come up, and um, there's a little more involvement. In the narrative they're putting together for us, they still have to provide all the information to us, but when it's going to planning commission, we're really making sure. That um, you know, all their I's are dotted, T's are crossed, the narrative's good, the plans are super crystal clear. That make it easier for the review of our planning commissioners, um, and staff as well. Um, but you know, if it, if it's staff level review, it's, it's saving the applicant some time and money. Um, it's also saving staff time, right, because now we're not having to go to the meeting, you know, stay after work, prepare for the hearing, go to the meeting. Um, but they're still subject to all the same requirements, and so that's kind of the thought for, for us was. Why, you know, how can we make sure that we're still bringing everything to the planning commission that needs that review? And yet, trying to streamline our process to make development um, more efficient for the applicant.
Uh, I mean, that is the, the problem I'm hearing with businesses, that they are having trouble with us and is that. Um, but that's more in the planning process, I'm guessing, is when you get with them from the beginning, so then it's a, then it's okay, application's complete. And it goes through this, I think they're having problems in that, they feel that they're coming back to you four or five times and having to go back to engineers and get fees added on. And why didn't they tell us this the first time, why are we waiting, is there a way, are we working on that as well, streamlining that process? Is any of this changing?
No, we're um, while I can appreciate people not liking the process, we do require that they provide certain information. It's all in our submittal requirements, it's all there, um, if we, if we deem an application incomplete the first time. We provide very detailed feedback on what we're looking for to get it complete.
One thing, okay, then they bring that, okay, now you need.
Tell them where we wanna see it, whether it's in the narrative, uh, what section they need to respond to, what plan sheet it needs to show up on. So we're very thorough, um. That's all I can say, we're very thorough. We do try to be very clear, so, cause we, we just wanna get to the finish line, so, um, but I know especially for people. Who have not been through the land use process before, it's not easy, it's a heavy lift, and so I can appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Some questions? So, when you talk about, what I'm hearing is wanna streamline. And so, question number one is. What other cities are doing what you're proposing? Two is, can you please quantify what the savings would be in terms of time, money?
I don't think I could quantify off the top of my head, but. It was a, yeah, it was a suggestion to streamline some processes when we did our uh, fee study. Of um, community development center fees earlier this year. I mean, I would say in general, just from the fact that we are not actually attending a planning commission hearing and staying after. To, to help with that, that's, you know, that's um. I could get three hours per staff member who's there, um, so that's three, you know, times.
And how many projects, so with that, like, how many projects, if we just do a look back of the last twelve months? How many projects would have not needed to go?
To planning commission?
Commission. Um, so that would be a great understanding of.
Sure.
We're looking at.
Sure.
Um, as, as well.
Yeah, I mean, it really, it's these smaller types of applications, I'd have to go back and look to get you a, a firm answer. Anything like Healthy Smiles, the Oxbow Development, these are some of our recent ones. Um, uh, those would go to planning commissions still. Um, anything like, obviously, like Bymart's over thirty thousand square feet, so this limits it to five thousand, so. The intent here is that it's going to be looking at projects specifically that are outright permitted. That don't have a ton of traffic generating um, trips and that um, it's not overly impactful. In terms of the size of the development, because it's limited to five thousand square feet and an acre. So, so that's, that's the intent, it's not to take the review away from planning commission, but I know there has been sentiment that. Why is this coming to us if we have to approve it, right, because when it's limited land use, it's technically under land use law. Not even a decision, a land use decision, because it's clear and objective, you're just applying the standards, it meets the standards, you have to. Excuse me, you have to approve, and so there's kind of this confusion on the public's part and planning commission's part. Um, it's not gonna take that much away um, from their purview, so it really is limited to the smaller projects. And then, or if you wanna touch on, very common, I would say that, that cities. Yes. Have these go straight to staff review.
There, there's almost always a, a staff level review of some sort, um, I've, I've worked in a lot of cities. And um, yeah, there's, there's always um, generally a staff level review. I'm, I am working in Gladstone right now as their staff planner, and they don't have it, and they would really like to, so that's on our list to do there. But um, I recently um, ended seven years of planning for North Plains, they have it, um, I've worked in Sherwood, they have a staff level review for this. Um, so it's a very, it's, it's common to do that, and as far as fees, I mean, I don't know the SCAPUs fees, but in other cities I've worked in. It's a savings of several thousand dollars, um, usually, the difference between a type two, what you consider a staff level review and a type three that goes to planning commission. Um, and then is there two or one planning commissions a month? To two, okay, so that's nice, a lot of cities only have one planning commission per month, so that really puts you at, you know, eight weeks from completeness. Sometimes to get a decision, get to a hearing, um, so here, you're probably looking at a closer difference of, is it typically about six weeks from completeness? Four to six, yeah, I mean, really with, um, you'll still have public notice requirements and things like that, so you're more like two to four versus four to six. In a lot of circumstances, it depends how busy your staff is, you know, certainly those timelines can show up.
That's good, most of the communities have some sort of brochure or handout saying this is what staff does, this is what.
A lot of cities do. Yeah, a brochure is common, or here's what to expect when you're submitting a site development review, yeah, there are examples we could provide that. Um, SCAPUs could base one off.
Yeah, and we do actually have some examples, it's on our list of kind of putting together a, a fax, a frequently asked questions. Kind of page for our planning page and just um, to help people through the process, even like providing a sample narrative. Of kind of what we're looking for, um, that goes a long way to help the applicant to understand what to expect. It's Anjan and Jay's to-do list, there's been a lot going on, so uh, it, it's definitely something we're working towards. That's a great idea.
And can we may, have like a meet the planning commission or a, and meet the community director, development director night? Where would they, all the businesses come and talk to you and ask you questions, and we, instead of them kind of talking to each other and complaining. They can talk to us directly and find out, you know, and get answers and.
I think that I would rather they made an appointment to come to my office to talk, so I can direct, I mean, we could create something like that. And come meet your city staff, um, but if they're having specific questions, they probably really want specific answers.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, recently, there were some perceptions out there about that process and talked to Lori about it. And within twenty-four hours was given an explicit timeline of what had happened with certain applications. And I think sometimes um, applicants don't realize how quick the turnaround really is, or we informed you, you know, the next day. Or the day of, but then it took you this long, it took you six weeks to then give us back what we asked, you know, that's not. The, the application was incomplete the first time, here's a list of things that you need to, to fix, and it took you that long to do it. Because it wasn't ready the first time, and I think people kind of get held up, but you're holding us up and you're not giving us a permit. You will give, I'll give you the permit as soon as X, Y, and Z is completely detailed. Um, and I think that was helpful for some people to go, oh, actually, yeah, you're right, that wasn't, my perception was a little off, that wasn't on you, that was on me. Or um, from personal experience, I know that it can be frustrating sometimes to work with. Um, a thorough individual like Lori, but on this side of the desk, I'm so thankful that we have someone that really forces. Every single check-off these applications.
And we, we work with people when we can, but you know what, we're setting precedence with every decision we make and we have to be careful, you know. I mean, if it makes, you know, oh, it's just this little thing, it should be okay, well, it's, might not be okay five years from now in this other situation. And if they can point back and say, oh, well, you let it happen here, you know, I don't, we, you really have to be careful, so.
And I know there doesn't seem like a lot going on in any one time, but you guys do have a lot and with the staff, and as, as it picks up and all of a sudden, you're seeing two, three, four. Applications, and you realize you don't have the staff to give back to them in the timely manner that they deserve, you'll let us know.
Yeah.
I mean, you'll.
Absolutely.
We cannot.
And the point of this too, though, is to streamline and make it a little easier, um, I've kind of been thinking through what, what does it look like? If some of this is at staff level and um, you know, there may be some forms we need to create where when we're doing our review. It is a checked box, you know, have they met their parking, uh, what was, parking stalls required, parking stalls provided, you know, where we can just kind of fill in a sheet. And make sure everything's checked off, as opposed to writing an eighty-page staff report. So um, you know, so then if you do have four applications, but only two of them are going to planning commissioner to a staff level. Maybe we can get through those a little quicker.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, are applicants allowed to have a pre-application conference to kind of hear, clear information?
Yes, yes, and actually, they are required.
That's right. Can you provide follow-up notes from those?
We provide a, a full uh, memo to them that, that explains um, basically all the code chapters. They're subject to and need to provide a narrative response to, as well as the timelines for approval. Uh, we answer any questions they had on their application form, and then um, engineering provides a full list of um, requirements. For their construction document plans, and then they also hear from the public works director, um, Columbia River PUD. Um, fire department and any other uh, agency partners we need to bring in.
Pre-app notes are really an instruction manual of how to successfully navigate the land use process and really helpful and sounds like very thorough in SCAPUs. Um, if I can just uh, flip the page to forty-one, we could, this. Um, if I can just, uh, flip the page to forty one, we could, this is a great conversation. I just want to raise one more topic. Um, I believe one more, well, we, we kind of already touched on major modifications. We can talk about that too, but um, on page forty one, seventeen point one two oh point oh four oh. Um, currently, if you do approve a site development review, you have one year to go ahead and start construction or you lose your approval unless you request an extension. Um, we, industry wide are seeing issues with financing or cost of building materials or things that might require someone to need a little more than a year to, um, go from approval to moving dirt on the ground. Um, in some communities, and I don't know how it is here, it could even be county issues that, um, are kind of keeping things from moving forward. Um, or other review authorities that are applicable if you have ODOT in the mix and things like that. So, um, we are seeing, um, since COVID, we, we've seen most communities switch to a two-year site development review approval time period. So we wanted to suggest that as, um, a way to allow people to go ahead and get their approval, but then have the appropriate amount of time to build.
Yeah, and I'll just say currently, um, if they haven't been issued a, a permit to begin construction within that one year period, they can request a one-year extension, but only one. And I would say nine times out of ten, they're asking for the extension because they're just not quite there yet. So this makes it easier. They would have two years, um, to get started, to get their ducks in a row and get started. And then they'd still have the option for the one-year extension, provided no title changes or no code changes have occurred that affect their, their project or anything.
If a code change does change it because we're changing our codes and zones and parking, would they have, would it be easy for them to change to the new adjustment or do they have to kind of start all over again or?
It depends on what it is. It could just be a minor modification in which they just state what the change is and I review it, make sure it doesn't violate any of our policies and then they're approved. Um, if it ends up being like a major modification, then it, they would go through this list to see if it's a major or a minor modification. Um, but code amendments take quite some time to get through the pipeline. So we would always like, you know, keep them abreast of what we're working on. Because it could be that it's more advantageous to them to wait for that code to be in place, in which case if they did need to reapply, they might wait until after that point. Um, or try and get it done, you know, before that's in effect, so.
Yes.
What would prevent for a developer, them that we give them to and then have them from just sit on the land? Can there be something in the code that would prevent developers just? Don't it?
Well, it's not in their best interest to sit on it because it's costing them money. So I don't see where they do that. I mean, once they've spent all the money to get to the point of a yes and they have approval, they're doing everything they can to get in the ground and, and, and start construction. So I think that that takes care of itself naturally in that they have, I mean, they want, they want to move.
Is there something that if they start digging and they, within that timeframe, then they have a certain amount of time before they, they have to finish? They could take as long as they want. They could build half of a building and then leave it.
Again, it's not in their best interest.
Uh, building permits are typically six months, so then they would have to read.
Yeah, they would have to, e- every, every new inspection onsite then pushes that out another six months. So, um, for whatever reason, yeah, there's occasionally slowdowns, but certainly, certainly their goal is to finish.
I know we're, we're getting close to time. Um, the last page does have those, um, major modifications. So we did make a couple of changes there to, um, just really quickly, one is that, um, we are not so worried about the ratio, um, and the different types of dwellings now because pretty much all dwelling types are permitted in most situations. And so, um, right above that, we did discuss density. That's currently in your code, that if you're increasing density by up to ten percent, that over ten percent would trigger that major modification. So we felt like the dwelling types isn't necessary. Um, we quantified the amount of parking that change would have, have to happen for it to be considered major ten percent. It used to just be any additional parking. Um, we removed change in uses divided by the uni- uniform building code. Is that, uh, Lori addressed that, that that occurs, um, often and isn't if it, if it's a change from, you know, a commercial use, that's a different office use or something like that. It's not triggering the major, um, review there. I think that was for the types of.
Yeah, and then on the, yeah, top of forty three, it's just, we talked about that one too, a change in land use. So if you're going from, you know, an office use to a, a gym, we don't, if it's outright permitted, then doesn't necessarily have to become a major modification.
So just to, just to wrap up, we, we will be meeting with the Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting, uh, uh, committee again at the end of this month. Um, we're still moving forward with the project. A lot of work's happening with the comprehensive plan updates with the urban growth boundary. Um, so this is just a very small piece of a big project that, um, will be coming forward to both groups for legislation next year.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Good. Evening adjourned.